Thank you, Dr. Burchard. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education, PWS meeting of September 10th, 2020, was convened virtually through the district's software. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. That meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. I'd like us all to rise for a flag salute and a moment of silence for the victims of 9/11 and their families. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay. Dr. Toback.
Good evening. This evening, I will keep my comments brief because we have a guest speaker and also because this evening many committee meetings were held. I don't want to duplicate reports that were made by the committee chairs. So we're holding our Board of Education meeting this evening at Anthony Wayne Middle School. This is our first in-person, in-school meeting since the start of the pandemic. Due to the limited number of people that may assemble indoors, this in-person meeting is limited to the Board of Education members, some administrators, our Board of Education attorney. And however, the meeting is open for the public to view and also to participate in the same manner as we did in prior meetings using Zoom. In order to ensure the safety of all involved and also for our students and staff coming to school on Friday, the following actions were taken. Anthony Wayne Middle School was, the media center was closed after students left school. A thorough cleaning of all tables, chairs, hotspots, and bathrooms was conducted by the custodial staff during the building. Once set up and cleaning was completed, a disinfectant was implied throughout the area using an electrostatic applicator. A four-minute dwell time was maintained for all surfaces treated with disinfectant to ensure maximum effectiveness of our clean products and in compliance with manufacturer's directions. Hand sanitizer station is in place for board and administrators upon arrival. A separate six-foot table with the chairs in place for the meeting for each attendee. Disinfectant wipes are available, and custodial staff is assigned to go through the same cleaning process tonight, once the meeting is over. So I know that one of the board members requested how we would make sure that the building is clean before and after our meeting. So that is a summary of what we'll be doing to make sure that the building is clean and safe for use, both this evening and for tomorrow. So I'd like to give a little bit of update from our Office of Emergency Management. The community spread is an important factor in every district's planning for in-person instruction. Conditions remain positive locally and throughout northern New Jersey. We've experienced 81 positive cases of COVID for the period of August 1st through September 1st against a population of approximately 55,000 people. That's about .0046 of our population percent, 0046% of our population per day. A significant rate of false positive tests has been reported, and we've received known false positive cases in Wayne. Therefore, hospitalizations are a better measure of the severity of the pandemic at any given time. The Office of Emergency Management reports that hospitalizations in Wayne are extremely low. The New Jersey Department of Health recorded five laboratory confirmed deaths in, due to COVID-19. All five of those deaths occurred two months ago or more. Currently, the New Jersey Department of Health is reporting that there are 419 people hospitalized across New Jersey for COVID, many of which are suspected but not confirmed cases. Our state's population is 8.8 million, meaning that .0047% of our state's populization, state's population is hospitalized due to COVID. The hospitalization rates in northern New Jersey are lower than in south Jersey. New Jersey hospitals are currently using only 1.1% of statewide ventilator capacity. And on a number of days, New Jersey has no reported deaths, and the daily rate of transmission has hovered at about 1% since June. We were pleased to announce the opening of the Preakness Early Childhood Center on Hamburg Turnpike. The principal, Jessica Hammond, proudly cut the ribbon at a ceremony on September 4th. We then completed a socially-distanced tour of the facility with the Board of Education and a number of administrators. Today, the staff of the Early Childhood Center welcomes students for in-person instruction for the first time. Our staff has been working diligently over the past year and a half, and we're very proud to be a part of preserving Preakness School and to also see students return to Preakness School. Preakness School was built in 1924 and was closed to students from 1977 through today. Special thanks to our Assistant Superintendent Donna Reichman, our business official, Bill Moffett, our Director of Facilities, John Meso, Director of Elementary Education, Dawn Auerbach, Dana Serra, Director of Student Support Services, for their commitment to this important project. And also, of course, thanks to the Board of Education for approving and moving ahead with this important project for the community. The opening of Preakness School is an important milestone for the district as we continue our drive to full-day kindergarten. Without Preakness, there is not enough space in our neighborhood schools for full-day kindergarten. During this academic year, we'll now take that time to upgrade our pre-K classrooms so that we are prepared for full-day kindergarten. I'd like to report in the first week of school. All of our central office administrators have spent a considerable amount of time this week touring all of our schools and hearing from staff members and students, and we're happy to see so many smiling faces. Of course, the school opening was very different from openings in the past. We appreciate the efforts of our staff, students, and parents in maintaining our safety standards and being responsible when it comes to wearing a mask, maintaining a distance, and completing the screening. Reminder to all of our students and parents that our school opening is a fragile thing. As you've read about many examples of large social gatherings, especially without social distancing, and other events promote the spread of the coronavirus, and that can have a detrimental effect on our ability to continue our hybrid model. A special note of thanks needs to be extended to Joe Burchard and the IT Department, Nick Polisi, Suzanne Fiavante, Tracy Lee, Juwei Xu, Christine Langjili, Deborah Giambattista, Eric Lindorf, Jen Nemitz, and all of our building-based technicians for their extraordinary efforts. This relatively small department was able to repurpose and distribute 4,000 Chromebooks to our students, as well as configure and distribute approximately 900 new computers to each of our staff members or teachers. All of our teachers have new computers because the prior laptops fell short when it came to video conferencing features. I also wanted to thank all of our building principals who worked day and night, especially over the last month, to make sure that we would responsibly open our schools for students and staff. I'd also like to recognize our teachers who created a warm and welcoming environment for our students. Our teachers have done an amazing job of adjusting to a completely new style of teaching with the hybrid model. We'll continue to provide professional development opportunities in the coming months to make sure that all staff members seeking training will have opportunities to receive training. Finally, a debt of gratitude is owed to all of our 12-month employees who have worked together to make sure our schools are ready to open. Our custodians and maintenance staff, as well as our school and central office secretaries, contributed greatly, and without their efforts, it would not have been possible to open our schools for in-person instruction. I'd like to mention some information about the CARES Act. One key component that made reopening possible was some additional funding that was unanticipated. In Wayne, we were fortunate to receive $383,000 of additional federal funding provided to the district to support our operation through the CARES Act, which stands for Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. Funding was used to fund the purchase of laptops for our teachers, high-ready software to help with virtual instruction, and approximately $100,000 was used to purchase PPE and floor decals. While this does not come close to covering all of our additional expenses caused by the pandemic, it does help ease the strain on our operating budget. Just a note about back-to-school nights this year. Back-to-school nights will be very different, and they have been in the past because they are all virtual events. Each of the back-to-school broadcasts will be available to the community soon and can be viewed at any time. This evening, I'm happy to announce that Dr. David Goldberg is in attendance. Dr. Goldberg is a pediatric infectious disease specialist at St. Joseph's Hospital, and he was approved by the Board of Education to work with school employees to help resolve any unique questions or concerns when it comes to pandemic safety-related issues. I asked him to attend our evening to share some thoughts with the community about the reopening of schools and also to provide some key considerations as we move ahead. So, Dr. Goldberg?
Yes, thank you. Right now, I have met with, via Zoom, with counselors, with administrators, with school nurses, and my message has basically been the same as the message that you've heard from others. With the incidence and prevalence of COVID so low in the community at this time, this is actually the best time to reopen the schools. With the measures that have been put in place, I think it's now here in early September as safe as it can be for the children to get back to school at all levels. But as we see, these things change over a time period. And I, you know, the message that I give out in September may not be the message in October or November. And it's complicated by the fact that, as we see in the community, you can create a bubble to protect people just so much. But unfortunately, once the students leave the school, you have very little control over them. And I was very sorry to see on the news tonight, since this is an involving picture, in Pelham, in the Bronx, in New York City, the school system has put a delay for two days because videos showed up of hundreds of their students gathering in parks for preschool parties. Whether these preschool parties are a clever way to get out of school, I'm not too sure. But it had to postpone it because, again, students, teachers, administrators, even physicians, we just have so much control over a situation. And then the person, the patient, the student, leaves our environment, and we have to rely on parents to do the right thing and to be part of the process. As I mentioned, I think, to the school nurses a couple of days ago or last week, the fact that we have to tell people if your child has fever, don't send them to school, is kind of silly. My comment is, it's always up there with the sign, please, employees will wash their hands after using the facility. I'm hoping that's more of a legal thing than a personal thing because you would hope that people know that. And so we hope that the parents will take this seriously as well and will not stress the system. But time will tell. But inevitably, or invariably, this is the best time to start it up because, as was mentioned, the prevalence of COVID in the community is very, very low. I might also add, just because I was listening to the statistics, unfortunately, the state of New Jersey does not put, separate out, people admitted to hospitals for other reasons who are found to be asymptomatic COVID-positive. And so while we are admitting people to St. Joseph's Children's Hospital with COVID... And so they go down as hospitalizations for COVID or hospitalizations with COVID, but obviously neither of them had an issue relating to COVID itself. So I think the numbers are slightly even elevated, and it's even lower than we're led to believe by the numbers. That is somewhat of an opening remark. I don't know if you wish to ask questions or other concerns that need to be answered or that I can help with. Do you want to... Give you a medical response. But I want you to understand, of course, that there is an administrative response and that there are procedures already in place. Someone this morning, or yesterday, asked me about wearing masks when no one's around. And while there's medically not an issue, I was reminded, quite rightly so, that there is a school policy to wear masks regardless. And so there's, you know, please remember I'm giving you a medical opinion or help... And I have a very nervous doctor at the other end. One second, please. I'm going to put myself... My apologies.
Okay, doctor. We just pulled the board, and we don't have any questions. So, thank you.
We just pulled the board, and we don't have any questions. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that concludes my administrative summary report. As far as the HIV report goes, during this reporting period, there were no incidents reported as HIV.
That's the end of your report, Dr. Toback?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to read a statement from the board as a whole. Welcome back, students, teachers, and staff. Obviously, this is not your typical back-to-school year, but the one thing that should remain constant is our desire to focus on educating our students and set an example of how we can all work together and make the best of the situation we have. We need to set the example for their well-being. The board stands behind the administration and everyone who worked for months on this reopening plan. Now's the time to stop talking about the plan and implement it. Yes, there will be hiccups, absolutely. We will do our best to address them in a timely manner. You can count on it. We hear you. Although, we have a process that needs to be followed for issues and concerns of our teachers and staff. If something isn't right in your classroom or building, you should email your principal. If that doesn't work, you should email your union rep. If it is still unresolved, then absolutely. Send Dr. Toback and the board an email, and we'll see to it that it's resolved. Or if it can't be, why not? Parents, we're asking for you to do the same. As a community, it's nice to share information and experiences on social media. However, if you need something addressed, you should also use these proper channels, starting with your child's teacher. Everyone here is to help you and your children have a successful year. Finally, we are not shutting down school. We cannot. We meet the state requirements to open, and there are guidelines that we will follow to shut down should the need arise. That hasn't happened yet, and we're hoping to remain open as long as we can. We're not ignoring the virus. We're following the data and Department of Health guidelines for safety and any outbreaks. At this time, we hope everyone is enjoying being back to school and seeing their teachers online. We're here to support you, and we appreciate all our teachers, staff, and administrators who are doing an excellent job for our students. Let's all work together. Thank you from all of us. And we'll move on to the agenda.
May I read the revisions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Mr. Moffett.
Okay, we have several revisions tonight. We will start on page... The board has three pages in front of them. Under the Board Revision T: Emergent Human Resources, items 1 through 12. The first change or addition is at T4. Approval to recent items. Add number 6, Stephanie Piper, as permanent sub at RC for $110 per day. Under the T5 item, approval of permanent subs. Add Gerard McMahon, permanent subs. Skylar Kofax, MS, $100 per day. Add Robert Greco, permanent sub. Skylar Kofax, $100 per day. Moving on to T7, which is approval of revised items. Revised 6, number 6, under SCPA appointments. Change schools as follows. Line number 4 from Lafayette to Skylar Kofax. Number 5 from Skylar Kofax to Lafayette. Number 48 from James Fallon to Pines Lake. Number 48 from Pines Lake to James Fallon. Moving on to T8, approval of appointments of district staff for the 2020-2021 school year. Revised number 4, Corian Gunstra. Change salary and step to $53,830. Step 1 BA. Revised line number 21, Kathleen Dennehy. Add dates 9/8/2022 to 6/30/2021. Under T9, approval of leave requests under Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Revised number 4285 as follows. Emergency paid leave days, parentheses, 80 hours, September 15th through September 18th and September 21st through September 25th. That's 2020. Unpaid from September 29th through October 12th, 2020. EFMLA, that is from October 13th through November 6th, 2020, at 2/3 wage up to $200 a day. Add number 9303SCPRY, September 8th, 2020 through September 21st, 2020. 80 hours, emergency paid sick leaves at full pay. September 22nd, 2020, October 16th, 2020 at 2/3 wage up to $200 a day. Add number 8419, teacher, SCMS. That's September 10th through September 23rd, 2020. 80 hours, emergency paid sick leaves at full pay. Delete employee ID number 8535. T11, approve of appointments of transportation schedule. Revised age payroll attachment. Change hours for line item number 25, Josephine Figoria Rito, from 6.25 hours to 4 hours and 15 minutes. Now, Mr. Burchard's going to help me with the next appointments. So, under Board Revisions, under T12, I'll wait for Mr. Burchard. Thank you, sir. Under 12, T12, approval of appointment of secondary extracurricular advisors. The resolution reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of a superintendent, approves the following extracurricular advisors for the 2020 to 2021 school year as per attached. Stipends will be prorated in the event schools are completely virtual and the assignment can go no longer be performed. As you see before you on the screen is the grid for the Wayne Hills Extracurricular Advisors. The next grid, which is the Wayne Valley Extracurricular Advisors, are listed in front of you on the screen. That concludes the revisions of tonight's agenda.
This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to save their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Everybody moved. Okay. Eileen Michael. It was too fast. Okay.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. I'd just like to say...
Sorry, name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Tori Esposito, 47 Woodlot Road in Wayne. I'd just like to say thank you again, Dr. Toback, for listening to the science. Nor Jersey is in a green area. I also, you know, I'd like to apologize for the WEA. How dare they give you a vote of no confidence? How quickly they forget who their employers are, us, the taxpayers. You know, remote learning has their bumps the first three days, but I know the teachers are working really hard. I know that my kids love being in school. They love seeing their friends. And I just, again, I just want to say out here, the WEA from day one should have been encouraging this and not trying to push for remote learning and listening to the science. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address, please.
I'm Krista Wild. I'm a teacher at Anthony Wayne Middle School. I've been a educator in the district for 23 years. I'm also a WEA rep. Good evening. When the board made the decision to force the educators of this district to return to an unhealthy and potentially deadly situation, you put the lives and the safety of the students and their teachers secondary to politics. The educators of Wayne maintain that by having done this, you clearly demonstrated you are all collectively unworthy of the job for which you were elected. We believe that you know the schools are not ready and that you cannot guarantee their safety with any level of honest confidence. You know there are still so many more questions and answers. The people on the ground, the experts, the educators, we have told you so, but you have turned the deaf ear. The only district employees who seem to say it's safe are those in administration that have a vested interest in opening the school. Your complete silence in addressing most of our educators' concerns were and remain a complete disregard of your duties to protect the school community. Your collective disinterest and poor decision-making were addressed at the last WEA general membership meeting. That is a meeting where all members were invited to attend. At that meeting, the rank-and-file membership made several motions that were then brought to the body for a vote. Many motions for job actions were passed, and I will speak on just two of those. The first is that Wayne teachers, secretaries, and nurses have collectively agreed to protect their physical, mental, and emotional health while at the same time demonstrating their outrage with your actions by strictly working to contract. All the extra things that we have traditionally done and that so often are taken for granted will no longer be available as long as you and upper administration fail to act in the interests of the whole school community. The second motion made in pass is that Wayne educators make a full-public and full-throated declaration of no confidence towards each one of you on the board. Your decision-making and silence at the last meeting demonstrated disregard and indifference to the concern of our educators. That alone should be enough to disqualify you from the honor of your elected post. There was no honor in your actions, or should I say inaction, which we see as unconcerned to the health and safety of our members and the students of Wayne. In doing so, you've turned your back on the most basic responsibility of any elected official to act in the best interests of those they serve. As such, the general membership of Wayne educators publicly declares this vote of no confidence with the hope that you can one day restore our confidence in you. You can start by listening in earnest and responding to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Donna Del Maro, English teacher at Wayne Hills High School. I will start by using two words: anxious professionalism. I want to applaud the administrators and the teachers in my building who rose to the occasion this past week and did what we all do best: educate. We did so despite all of the rancor of the past several weeks. We did so wearing masks and keeping our distance. We did so excited to see the students that we missed seeing in person during the shutdown last spring. And we did so because it is our calling and an illustration of our professionalism. To be clear, these are my personal experiences and my personal concerns to date. The start to every year is accompanied by anxiety, but this year, that anxiety was quadrupled for many of us. Yet, for a few minutes each day, I forgot about COVID-19 as I welcomed my students, taught them new procedures, and eased them into the new normal in the classroom. However, that is exactly what concerns me. However, that is exactly what concerns me. We can't forget about COVID nineteen, and it is disconcerting to think that I may accidentally put my health or the health of my students in danger by forgetting to use hand sanitizer after opening the door to my classroom, after loaning a student a pen and then forgetting to wipe it down, after simply moving my mask aside due to feeling overheated in a closed space, or simply by being in the same room with an asymptomatic carrier for an extended period of time. The danger of COVID nineteen cannot be underestimated. It is still real. Just today, I'm hearing reports of students testing positive in New Jersey schools and that those schools are shutting down. What is the district's plan should this occur? How many positives will it take? Someone once referred to opening schools as a gamble. I am not much of a gambler, and I don't like the idea of rolling the dice when it comes to my health or the health of my students and colleagues and ultimately my family members. Too many questions remain. There is no hard and fast rule when it comes to COVID. There are no hard and fast answers. The long-term effects of this virus to young and old, I might add, are of concern. Some may suffer few symptoms. Others report heart and lung ramifications following a horrific week or two of illness. If all this sounds like an overreaction, so be it. In the long run, if it looks like you are overreacting, you are probably doing the right thing. And as an aside, if you found it difficult to hear me or if you discerned some awkward pauses, I was wearing my mask. I'll be wearing it and speaking through it for much longer than three minutes when I teach next week and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, it's Robert Blanchard. I'm the Assistant Director of Facilities. I would like to address some comments that Mr. Dennis Carroll made on the public board meeting of eight twenty of twenty this year. I take personal offense to the disingenuous comments he made about the conditions of Valley High School. First and foremost, the facility staff has gone above and beyond to ensure a safe return for everyone entering any of our schools. While the teaching staff were home with their families, our custodial maintenance crew were here. We made sure underprivileged students were able to continue receiving much-needed meals. We made sure students could receive Chromebooks to continue their education. Our custodial staff understood we are here to serve the students and taxpayers alike without fanfare, acknowledgement, or to ask for anything other than fair wages and benefits. Why? Because we truly care about students and staff alike. Mr. Carroll stated that he taught for roughly twenty-four years, and yet I cannot locate a single email, work order, or any complaint from him about the bathrooms, classrooms, or hallways in relation to cleanliness, improper ventilation, or concerns about unsafe conditions. I will go further in that he stated some serious concerns about fire violations. I find it extremely troubling that he noticed fire violations but neglected his responsibility to our students and taxpayers by failing to report what he felt were unsafe conditions. I am questioning his honesty based on facts in my twenty-nine years in public education. I inspected these areas. They underwent a Q S A inspection last year, and every building receives a thorough fire inspection annually. I can assure you, everything I just stated is true because I'm one of the responsible people, and I would never ignore a fire violation or unclean buildings. I feel a public apology is in order since most of his statements attack the men and women who are truly dedicated to the students of Wayne Township Public Schools. It is very apparent he has another agenda because his attack was not based on facts. I also question his dedication to our students because if the conditions that he spoke about existed and he remained silent, then his dedication is self-serving. Please do not use our staff, our fire inspector, or the people who perform Q S A inspections to further your agenda. We are all here, we were all here while you were at home, and we were working diligently to get our students back to one of the best educational systems and some form of normalcy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna Reaver, Vice President of the Wayne Education Association. Tonight, I would like to ask questions. Some I will give you the answers to, and some I would love to hear your answers. As I speak with colleagues throughout the district, I learned that you, Mrs. Kazan, performed a walkthrough with Dr. Toback of some of the buildings. What I find interesting is the select schools that you were brought to. I have to wonder why it was those schools that you were taken to. Were you brought to the rooms at Wayne Valley that had mold in the ceiling tiles? I'm guessing not. Were you brought to the elementary school who had their P A system taken out to have the new phone system installed? I'm guessing not, because you would have seen that the phones were not actually installed, were not actual functional before we returned to school. The teachers were not even given directions on how to use the new system until the middle of the day on Tuesday. So if there was an emergency when the kids arrived, what would they have done? Used their cellphones? Were you taken to the offices that related service providers or child study team members used to test students? I'm guessing not, because you would have also noticed that they did not have the plexiglass shields that they were promised from special services. I find it funny that it has been presented to the public that teachers and support staff were on the committees for the reopening plans. I find it funny because we were, we sat there, we literally sat while administration talked. But we didn't sit long. My committee, Educational Gaps and Losses, we met twice. I guess they aren't expecting kids to have academic issues this year. The teachers and support staff that served on all of these subcommittees had no real say. Our suggestions were dismissed, and a plan was created without our input. We were not even part of the discussion when choosing the hybrid model. If you're still not sure if I'm telling the truth because administration has told you differently, ask yourself these questions. Did they ask the P E teachers at the elementary level how they're going to teach health this year without health curriculum? Did they ask the A P teachers how they were going to get their kids ready to take an A P exam with keeping the block schedule during hybrid? Did they ask the kindergarten teachers how the K overlap would work every single day with five-year-olds? Five-year-olds who they cannot get within six feet of to help and who need help logging onto their Chromebooks? Did they ask the teachers who have never been trained in Google Meets how they're going to livestream to their virtual students while having their in-person students in front of them? I'm guessing no, otherwise there would have been more than thirty minutes of Google Meet professional development scheduled for the district before the start of school on Tuesday. I could go on and on, but you've cut us down to three minutes. We have spoken to teachers all week, teachers who are feeling frustrated, defeated, overwhelmed, unsupported, and those are not my words, they are their own words. I have heard so many stories last week of teachers who were literally in tears because the pressure they were being put under was cruel. Then the tears continued this week when technology and Wi-Fi issues arose, and the teachers were expected to help everyone without anyone to help them. You not only set them up for failure, you let down the very people who you claim to appreciate and respect for making Wayne the great school district it is. I can promise you, it's not all because of your administrators that we achieve amazing test scores and rankings. It's not because of administration that New Jersey is once again the number-one school system in the country. The health issues and safety shortcomings of your reopening plan have not gone away, but instead of addressing them to the teachers who have asked you point-blank at the last board meeting, you have chosen to take teachers who are truly scared for their physical and now mental and emotional health and not even throw them into the deep end, you threw them into the Atlantic Ocean without a life rank. Good night.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, my name is Amy Nazarko. I live at ninety-one Chestnut Drive. I am a teacher in Wayne. I am a parent of two beautiful Wayne Public School students. I grew up in Wayne, I moved away, and I moved back here for my family. As a parent, I've seen many social media posts about how much our district loves our teachers and how much they want to protect them. So I can't understand why a simple way to keep teachers safer is not being enacted. As of right now, teachers are not permitted to go home to perform their office hours. As recently as August twenty eighth, Harvard University published that aerosols from the coronavirus can remain in the air for up to three hours. Almost every single room in my high school is a shared space. This means if anyone's mask fall down, or if anyone removes their mask to eat or drink, there is a risk of these aerosols being released and staying for hours in our shared air. And yet, we are forcing teachers to remain in a room shared with multiple people, prolonging their risk of encountering these aerosols. This also forces them to wear their masks longer and attend Google Meet sessions with their students while wearing masks, even though all those students will be at home. As a parent, I would much rather have more opportunities for my children to see their teachers' smiling faces instead of a mask. Therefore, if we must stay in hybrid, I beg you to allow teachers to have the ability to go safely home, to hold office hours, alleviating some of our risk of coming in contact with this virus. As of today, I have not heard one reason or answer as to why teachers are not allowed to return safely home with the students away from lingering aerosols in tight, hot, shared spaces. You created rules, guidelines, protocols to keep our students safe. Why not employ all of the same protocols and all of the same guidelines to the teachers and allow them to return safely home to perform office hours at the same time as their students? How did the district come to the conclusion that staying in a shared space is a safer way of holding office hours? I look forward to hearing your scientific facts to back up your reasoning. Thank you.
Next caller.
Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address, please.
My name is Melinda Del Pizzo. I'm a teacher at Wayne Valley High School. I take this virus very seriously since I lost my mom from it on May first. I am reading this for Kathleen Bolzer, another teacher at Wayne Valley, who could not be here this evening because she's teaching a remote class at the State County Community College. My name is Kathleen Bolzer. I teach math at Wayne Valley High School. I feel it is necessary to speak to you regarding the hybrid schedule that the district has implemented and the very real possibility of contracting this virus from another staff member or student. My first concern is that of my health and the health of my family. A secondary concern, but no less important, is the health of my colleagues, students, and their families. Even with the student size in the building, a third of what it normally is, the concept of social distancing in a school where some hallways are no more than a six feet wide seems implausible. One-way halls sounds like a good idea, but who is going to be there to enforce that? And what happens to the student or staff member that travels down a one-way hall the wrong way? Handing me sanitizer wipes, sanitizer spray, paper towels, and rubber gloves for my classroom last week is a start, but who is responsible for actually using these products to clean the room before classes meet? And what guarantee do I and my students have that cleaning was done effectively enough to move any traces of the virus should a surface have been infected during the previous class? Who is responsible for determining if a student or staff member is exhibiting COVID nineteen symptoms and what is to be done if that happens during a class? Are we all to quarantine for fourteen days or until that person has been identified as not positive for the virus? Think about this as a parent for a minute, not as a superintendent or Board of Education member. Could you comfortably send your child into my classroom knowing that these situations are very real? I understand the burden that this may be placing on families, but until this virus goes away, we need to do everything we can to contain the spread of it. Thankfully, the death rate from the virus has dropped, but would that be any comfort to you if one of your staff members, students, or even a family member of yours died from the violet virus because you contracted it by being in school? I ask that you please think about that and reconsider the hybrid schedule, replacing it with a virtual schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a minute, I'd like to interject here. Dr. Toback, did you want to ask Dr. Goldberg?
Dr. Goldberg, would you be interested in weighing in on any of the comments you've
You know, I cannot offer more assurances to assuage the anxiety that's being voiced that I hear and that I understand. Well, you all, let me be blunt, while you're all working in schools, I'm working in a hospital. And in February, March, and April, that same anxiety spread throughout the staff of all hospitals. Now, you know, and back then, we didn't have the knowledge base that we have now. There is no such thing as a perfectly safe system. You know, I sympathize with you all, and if you're looking for something that's a hundred percent assurance, I can't give it to you. No one can give it to you, and no one, and anyone who says there's not a risk involved really isn't paying attention to what's going on. I'm not sure that's what you want to hear, but that is the unfortunate truth we deal with. But there are methods and modes of dealing with the situation that have been put in place that have been proposed by both C B C, Department of Health, and at the local levels to ameliorate the risk as much as possible. There is no way that I can tell you that some mother is going to send her child who was sick to school and possibly infect others. You've seen this more than I do come flu season, come R S V season, come any other respiratory viral season where parents will send their child. I see, I system crashed on me and I got muted. There are, you know, unfortunately, no one seems to obey the specific question. Some that I did hear to get into specifics, yes, if a child is seen to have one of the symptoms associated with COVID, my understanding is that child will be removed from the classroom to the nurse's office, placed in isolation, sent home, and will not be back until they are either found with another diagnosis or spend time in quarantine. If the child is found to be COVID positive, those people who have been in close contact with the child, less than six feet for over fifteen minutes, will need to be quarantined as well. That is the recommendation, that is my understanding is the policy. Again, this is just something we have to learn how to deal with and the like. You know, again, if there's a specific question medically, I'll be happy to answer it, but you know, I can give you assurances, and all the people who have said how anxious they are, I can give you assurances. I don't think that's going to make you feel better tonight. I know from my own experience, it didn't make me feel better back in March and April, yet we did it because that's what was our job, and we took precautions. And unfortunately, I'm sure somebody will say, yes, but doctors got sick and nurses got sick, and yes, they did. And hopefully, come wintertime, with a recurrence of the disease process that will probably happen, we'll have learned better lessons and we won't run that same risk. But all I can do again to say is, right now, the risk in northern New Jersey is minimal, and this is about the best time for children to get back to school.
Thank you, Dr. Goldberg. If you could mute yourself again. Mrs. Kumar.
I actually had a question for Dr. Goldberg because they did request about shields and talking about shields versus masks as safety.
I'm sorry, you said heel? Oh, shields, I'm sorry. Masks, shields by themselves are not as effective as masking. By shield, I assume you mean plastic shield in front of the face. In association with masks, or let me, masks are the best way to prevent spread of respiratory particulate, and that's what you want to do, is also the best way to prevent from breathing in. In combination with a shield, it increases it slightly. The benefit of a shield is for those children of a younger age who are coughing where there is a risk of getting it into the eye, getting the virus in the eye, then you rub your eye and you get it on your hands and back into your body itself. So shields in certain situations will add to the protection, but the combination of mask and shield in an environment, you know, without people being sick, is not something that's recommended. You just don't get a lot more bang for the buck, as it were. However, definitely, a shield alone is not sufficient. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, doctor. Next question, Dr. Tob-
Dr. Goldberg, a comment was made about the concern about students walking the wrong way down a hallway, that somehow they're out of position and not where they're supposed to be in relationship to other students or staff members. Can you speak just briefly about the risk based on incidental contact that was described?
One, again, I sympathize, having just gone to ShopRite this morning and not understanding why people can't walk the right way down the corridors, the aisles. So I sympathize, and I'm sure it's much worse when dealing with teenagers and the like who by very nature just want to do it differently. But again, passing someone in the hallway is not something that will lead to transmission of COVID. It won't lead to transmission of flu or R S V or metahumilomavirus or all the other viruses we see every winter. And that's why, you know, the situation is set up within six feet, past the fifteen minutes is what's used. So if I pass someone in the hallway or I pass someone on the street, and we're both wearing masks even, the chances of each of us contaminating the other one is pretty zero. Yes, it is possible, anything again is possible, and we talk about relative risk. If someone stops me in the hallway and says, hi, Dr. Goldberg, and then proceeds to cough in my face, and we're not wearing masks, obviously, that's not what we're talking about. But just walking by someone, as you see on the street, in the corridors, at ShopRite, is not an efficient way to transmit virus. I think everybody should obey the rules about walking the certain ways. Again, you shouldn't send your child to school- Again, you shouldn't send your child to school with fever, but we all know these things will happen anyway. But it's not a way that the virus is going to be transmitted. The risk is nil.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you, doctor. Anyone else from the board before I'm, okay. Next caller, Dr. Richard.
Lindsay Miller, teacher at Anthony Wayne. The best classrooms in schools make students feel comfortable, safe, supported, and engaged. I've seen a phrase online that you have to Maslow before you can Bloom, referring to two well-known writers on the philosophy of education. Bloom stresses the importance of pushing students to engage in higher levels of thinking and rigor, but Maslow reminds us that before they can learn in Excel, they must first be in a safe and supportive environment before that can happen. That goes for adults, too. I waited for information about the plan anxiously throughout the summer, knowing I would be charged to implement that plan and wanting to get started, to get ready as early as I could. When the information began to come, it struck me as odd that no information sessions or documents were being designed for teachers early on, who might be able to provide valuable feedback on what was wise, feasible, or missing. It really stood out that providing teachers with adequate training to carry out the plan was not considered a valid safety reason to delay in-person instruction even a week. A more robust effort to provide a responsive forum for our input would have helped me feel confident and more assured headed into this school year. It stood out to me how my classroom was not as equipped for socially-distanced learning as some I've seen posted by other teachers from other schools. I had a crowded room of desks and furniture with a direction to do my best to space things out. It's a common theme I've seen repeated, where this plan lacks details and implementation, it's left to already-stressed teachers to just figure it out and do their best, and we will. The other classes had Plexiglas teacher desk shields and sometimes student ones, so I did not. When I'm planning on, or having lunch, or sitting down to do office hours at the school, I will need to hope I've adequately disinfected everything in that space with wipes. My mother, who worries no matter how old I get, asked me to eat lunch in my car, but she shouldn't be responsible for making my workplace safe. Multiple teachers share classrooms and offices during the day, creating more risk. Our limited training didn't leave us confident. We're trying to figure out a new way of teaching as we go, all the while seeing a constant trickle of bad news from schools reopening around the country and feeling wary. We're still unsure how to run effective meets, the limited training focused on the technicality, not the pedagogy. We joke about the time lost simultaneously managing the attendance of check-in of virtual and in-person students while trying to start instruction and watching for emails from students seeking troubleshooting help to get into meets, or reporting that lag prevents them from opening their assignments at the same time they're in meets. We watch the clock so we have enough time to supervise students cleaning their desks every period. We're getting better at it, but we should have been given training time to figure this out adequately ahead of the students coming. I worry about whether I can provide students quality experiences in the time left over with the distraction of managing multiple audiences. I worry that it's only a matter of time before the virus enters the building because it could overwhelm all the plan's precautions, even when perfectly executed, by both teachers and 12-year-olds. I worry because this plan doesn't seem to match up with the best practices of hybrid instructional models out there before this. And yet, I'm going to be judged by some uncertain standard that can't be specified at this point by the results I produce for teaching within this model. Thank you for your time.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Heather Potts. I'm a teacher at Wayne Valley High School. I'm also chair of the Health and Safety Committee for the Wayne School District through the WEA. Prior to school opening, many staff voiced concerns and asked questions in anticipation of a lack of clarity and safety in our buildings. Unfortunately, these past few days have done little to decrease the ambiguity of our situations, especially when discussing ventilation, and more recently, temperatures. As chair of the Health and Safety Committee, I am in a position where I have heard concerns from numerous members that seem to focus on three main topics. First is clarity in regards to ventilation. The WEA has put in several requests to the board for documentation about the ventilation in the buildings and have received very little in response. Details about ventilation in rooms are sparse. When members have turned to administration in their buildings for help in determining how ventilation is being accomplished in their classrooms, even they don't know the answers. This was why the WEA had asked for more information prior to the start of the school year, but we were not provided with it. The second point is windows. We have been told to keep windows open in areas without air conditioning, which apparently brings in air from the outside. We are not allowed to use fans in windows. We were told windows would open more, but some areas still have windows that barely open or that are bolted shut. We were told to open windows for ventilation, and so in some areas, other equipment has been turned off. We can only ventilate properly if windows open up and down, but most windows in the buildings are not designed that way, limiting airflow even in windows that have been unlocked to open further outward. Finally, temperature. With what feels like little ventilation and stagnant air from a lack of air movement through windows, the temperature and humidity has been exceedingly difficult to deal with, especially with the added necessity of wearing masks. Healthy, fit individuals struggle after climbing a set of stairs, and the temperature measurements in some schools have shown that indoor temperatures at the beginning of the day measure over 10 degrees warmer than the temperature outside, only then getting hotter and harder to deal with as the day continues on. I ask for and would appreciate your response tonight to the following questions related to these topics. One, when can we get information regarding how ventilation works and if ventilators have been inspected for functioning in each building and room? Two, when can we expect that the windows will be altered in a way that allows for adequate air movement? And three, what is the temperature at which schools will become temporarily virtual for the heat days mentioned by Dr. Toback at a previous meeting? Thank you so much for your time.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Laura Louisey. I'm a teacher at Pines Lake Elementary School. I've been teaching in Wayne since 1996. I did my student teaching here. I did a long-term setting position, and then took my first position at Pines Lake 23 years ago. I've been through a lot of negotiations, I've seen, that have necessarily not gone well, you know, tensions between boards, administrations, however, never during that time did I ever feel that our professional opinions weren't taken into consideration, or that what we had to say didn't matter or wasn't respected. But that's exactly how I feel now. I listened to every board meeting this summer leading up to these decisions that have been made by the board and the administration. Many teachers have spoken about their concerns, and I just don't feel that we're being listened to. Yes, of utmost importance is the safety and health of the staff and students in the building. However, many people have already addressed that, so what I would like to do is take some time to address the matter of preparation. The problem is the decisions are being made by people who aren't delivering the instruction. I'm not one to complain. I've never spoken at a board meeting. I've never spoken up ever. However, these past three days, I have seen my teachers cry and fall to pieces because of what has been asked of us. Schedules are impossible in middle school. I can only speak to that because I don't teach in high school, but elementary school, it's absolutely insane. The needs of our special ed population, and that brings a whole new set of scheduling challenges and very little direction support from upper management administration. Many questions are asked and little or no result. We've been given little, almost no direction when it comes to many aspects, especially with the technological platforms. We were told we're going to use Google Meet over the summer, so of course, just like anybody, we Google, we try, we figure things out, but no real instruction. We must practice what we preach. Would we ever ask our students to use platforms without teaching them how to first? We weren't given that opportunity. We had a video to watch if we couldn't attend in the summer, and a one-hour session with our turnkey teacher in the building, which afterwards, my team and I spent four hours working in Google Meet, only to find out how many times we were going to get kicked out because of Wi-Fi connections and our devices froze, and then we were just thrown to the wolves on Tuesday. And everything we heard was, don't worry, everything will be great, you'll do a great job, of course we will, because that's what teachers do, and we always rise to the occasion. However, it's easy to say that when you're not living it. We're told to use iPads because the desktops don't have cameras and the students can't see us, and then if you want to share your screen, you have to use the desktop in conjunction with the iPad, which have no stand, so you have to figure out how to prop that up, all within, with no time to plan or prepare any of this. Plug in my iPad, I plugged it in over the weekend, it died two hours into my teaching, so my live stream lessons were a mess. I'm sorry. So my students in person were not given the attention that they deserved because I was constantly adhering to the technology. Yes, will it get easier? Sure. Will the connectivity get any better? Probably not. Will the management is only going to get more difficult as we continue because our lessons are going to get more in-depth, longer, and many lessons won't exist. We need the attention they need and deserve simultaneously.
That's your time? I'm sorry. Dr. Goldberg, I need you to mute your mic. Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, Lori Centron from NJEA. First and foremost, Mr. Moffett, I would like to thank you for all of the Oprah request forms that you sent my way. I'm speaking because I'm a little disappointed that the WEA was not given the opportunity to do the walkthroughs at the end of sitting throughout the summer on those committees. I feel that if they were given the opportunity to walk through, a lot of Heather Potts' questions could have been answered. We have addressed many of the concerns, and I noticed and saw a couple of things in the HVAC memo that was sent to me about filtration and specifically the filters. MERV-8 seem to be the ones that have been purchased. I do not know if the district has put in for more, I did, higher filters, I should say, because the MERV-8s are really for dust. I understand that the HVAC systems may not be able to accommodate the 17, and I know that we have purchased some HEPAs. However, I feel that we should have attempted to put in more than the minimum. We keep saying that we opened meeting the requirements. If we read the 104-page document and some of the educators sitting on this board, as I am also a board trustee, read it, you opened with the anticipated minimal standards. In one correspondence with Mr. Geppert, to our attorney, he did say that in some cases you did exceed the minimum. However, the WEA and myself were not given privilege to know what those were. So I truly wish that we could and would continue and grant them the walkthrough. The districts that are closed, the ones that I represent and my own district where I sit as a board member, we went remote because of the HVAC system. We did not want to open in a minimum standing, and I really wish that you would have thought of that yourselves. To Dr. Goldberg, with all due respect, you went into medicine and work in a hospital. Teachers went into teaching to teach. Their anxiety is real, and it should be recognized and acknowledged and accepted. And to Mr. Blanchard, I represent the custodians. I know how hard they worked, but to put in his comments that while the teacher sat home all summer, that is uncalled for, because I'm sure many of those teachers were getting ready for and doing things in anticipation. I hope the board members heard that comment, especially those of you who are educators and are remote, because I feel that that was an insult. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dana Toddzy, and I am the reading specialist at Randall Carter Elementary School. To say that the last few days of hybrid learning has been frantic, overwhelming, and stressful for teachers is a colossal understatement. I am so proud of the Herculean efforts our Randall Carter teachers have demonstrated this week with only two days of professional development to get ready for a completely new way of teaching. With all the technological malfunctions in the hybrid and fully virtual setting on Wednesday, I think I speak for all of us when I say not a significant amount of teaching took place. An exorbitant amount of our teachers' time was spent troubleshooting technical problems, taking away from precious instructional time. Our younger students in kindergarten and first grade struggled the most using technology, some for the first time in the school setting. Our teachers were tasked with being fully present, available, and engaged in two separate job capacities, for both in-person and virtual students all at the same time. The patience and composure that was exhibited by our teachers was extraordinary in spite of tremendous pressure to perform an insurmountable task of juggling curriculum delivery without significant training and technical support. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Katie Albar Clark. I live at 34 Hillcrest Drive. I would just like to thank all of our teachers and voice my support to let teachers go home for office hour and their vote of no confidence. Bloomfield is going in at a later month. They are working on a plan to make sure that everybody is safe. There are serious concerns. I'm a Valley alumni. Wayne Valley is an old building. Our custodial staff is fantastic. They are some of the hardest-working people I've ever met, but that doesn't change the fact, our building is old. We had enough problems trying to get rid of the asbestos in the black mold, or not black mold, just regular mold. If we cannot guarantee safety, why risk it? What lesson is that to our children? And this isn't just going to affect our schools, and it's going to affect our whole community. It's going to affect grocery workers because it's going to get to the parents, and the parents are going to take it other places. We all worked really hard to get where we are now. We all remember how things, bad things were in March, but now we can do things like go on walks, have barbecues, and just small little things. I worry that if we ignore, if we go back, we will lose a lot of the progress that we made. I know I missed my graduation, I missed family birthdays, I missed a funeral. It's not, it's not safe, and it's not okay, and we should not risk the health and safety of our teachers, our children, our parents, and our entire community. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Hi, I'm Carrie Anne Palmieri, and before I speak about what I had prepared, I wanted to just talk about what Dr. Goldberg had said for a minute. A lot of things he said were of minimal risk, minimal risk of passing someone in the hallway, minimal risk of this, minimal risk of that. Well, when you add up all these minimal risks, any math person would tell you that the risk then goes up as you, these minimal risks come together. While I am the WEA's second vice president of the WEA, today I am speaking on behalf of GW. I also want to get out from the start that our building administration has done nothing less than a stellar job to get us to where we are right now. I've heard that the teachers are doing a great job. I've heard that the parents have had positive things to say, but this is coming at a large price to our members. I've also heard that it takes time to get comfortable with this new arrangement. It'll take time to become comfortable. Well, the people on the Titanic were comfortable with not enough lifeboats till the ship sank. I sincerely hope we are not heading for disaster, but comfort is not necessarily an indicator of safety. The words inappropriate and irresponsible were directed at a member by our HR director, Paula Clark, as a high-risk member was inquiring about a 504. That member tried to give courtesy to our principal by keeping him in the loop about her 504 request, and she was told that was inappropriate and irresponsible of her to do. The exact words that a pregnant, high-risk member should hear for trying to put her health and that of her unborn baby first. Another member conveyed her worry about the air quality, trying to keep students socially distanced and the exposure that teaching in multiple rooms brings. It's important for the board to know that it's not only us, the students are struggling too. There are students who are honestly scared. We just heard an alumni speak about her being nervous. There are internet issues constantly because we are overloading the system, and this just adds to the stress the students are feeling. It is not working. Also, the food issue, grab-and-go with no water available, the water fountains are closed. So if a student doesn't bring lunch or water for a multitude of reasons, a middle school or goes without food or drink from 7:45 a.m. till one in the afternoon, after one in the afternoon. These are just a few of the concerns with the plans put together by the board and the district. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you unmute yourself? Hello? Dr. Bichard, next caller.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Eileen D'Amico, 29 Manor Drive. At the last meeting, I shared my son's experience with virtual learning last year, and I'll reiterate what I said that night, in that I blamed no one for his experiences as they were last spring, as there were obviously no tools, no resources, no advance notice to COVID, and certainly no time. I will say that already, just this past few days, his learning experience is markedly different in a good way, and I'm, my husband and I are very thankful to everybody who has worked to put together the hybrid plan that he is participating in, and we're very thankful for his teachers at Wayne Hills, in this case, for executing on that plan and for being engaged this week so far, and, you know, for doing the very best, or what appears to be the very best that they can, under what we know are very difficult and challenging circumstances and situations. I do want to voice, though, you know, a concern that, as parents, we have, I know it's been all over social media this week, parents at all levels, students at all levels are having it, and it's been mentioned a number of times tonight by, you know, teachers and folks who've already spoken, and it's one of the reasons why, you know, we sit here and scratch our heads, thinking, how can we possibly even talk about an all-virtual scenario when, quite frankly, the technology, as it's already been acknowledged, isn't working perfectly, and in all likelihood, it's not going to. Google Meets, as a platform, the little bit I know of it, but right now, I know it's having serious issues, because it's being used at a capacity that was not intended, I guess, by Google. You know, people are getting booted off of instructional time, sessions are failing, you know, and this is not just, you know, teachers having these issues, the kids and the parents are having them too. So, you know, to sit here and say, oh, but let's go all virtual, doesn't make any sense. The kids need something beside virtual learning when the technology is, can't be relied upon. I don't know how else they would get educated if there's a technology that they can't rely upon unless they're in some sort of in-person or part-time in-person environment. You know, there have been frustrations across the board this week, and I just think it's important that everybody understand that it's not just the teachers and the staff that are having these frustrations, the families and the kids are having them too. There is fear, there's anxiety, you know, for those of us who choose to send our children back into a hybrid environment, we've weighed those risks and take them very, very seriously, but felt, in our case anyway, that in order for our son to be the, to get the best education he possibly could, he needed, that needed to be in some form of in-person, and as I said, in our case, we chose hybrid. You know, I just, I just guess I wanted to be clear that, you know, the voices of all the stakeholders deserve to be heard here, the teachers, the staff, the administration, and the parents and families of the kids too, because really, you know, it's their health and safety as well that we need to consider, and their education in the long run, and I just wanted to make that clear tonight. Thank you so much.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. State your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Kyle Kubiak, and I'm a teacher at Wayne Valley High School. I'm also the lead building rep for the WA in that building. I'm currently in my seventh year of teaching at Valley, and I still approach every day with the same passion and fire that I've had every day since I left my previous career in information systems to become a teacher. I also take pride in the fact that some of the most anxious, overwhelmed, depressed, and misunderstood students in our school community have repeatedly told me that making to, coming to my class makes their day better. This is why I teach, for them, for all of my students. I'm also high-risk for COVID-19 in at least three different ways, but none of them are disabilities that would justify 504 accommodations. The only reason I did not walk away from this profession in recent weeks is because I cannot abandon these kids when they need me the most. This Board of Education, along with all the other boards of education throughout the state of New Jersey, loves to take credit for being among the best public schools in not only the state, but the entire nation, and you have shared in this success with us through giving credit where it is due in the form of congratulatory words of praise in this very same public forum. However, in the same seven years as a teacher in this district, I cannot recall any instance where the board took actions on our behalf that matched those words without the WA, if WEA needing to take a job and action against them. Instead, it seems that too many of the actions the board takes are aimed at devaluing, devaluing and demoralizing the works of teachers. Rather than offering your needed support and our shared mission to provide the children of this township with the best possible education during a deadly pandemic, it seemed that your game plan is to either defer to policy and procedure, or to turn to your attorney and ask, just how much can we get away with? In this case, you believe that you can get away with sacrificing the health and possibly the lives of students and teachers in this community. I wish I did not have to take this difficult step of speaking these words to you, but this is truly a life-and-depth situation. Your recent actions speak far louder than any of the words of praise you have spoken about us in the past, and the fact that you are clearly further apart from each other than any of your students and teachers during the course of the school day right now speaks volumes. My classroom is on the second floor of Wayne Valley and has an average temperature of between 80 and 95 degrees with 70 to 100% humidity during this time of the year, perfect conditions for the spread of COVID-19. In a normal year, teachers in my school do their best to work in a state of near dehydration, sweating through their clothes down to their underwear every day for the sake of our students. Now we're doing it wearing masks that hold our hot breath against our faces like the ones you're wearing right now. The difference being that you are in the comfort of an air-conditioned space. Tell me, does this sound like the best educational environment for students? Our windows do not open more than six inches, as my colleagues had said, and the windows on the second floor are closed every night, trapping in the heat, raising the temperature and humidity with each day that passes until the first frost every year. Tell me, does this sound like the best educational environment for students? State guidelines do not allow for fans in the classroom, and this year, the water fountains are turned off to prevent the spread of COVID-19. This is clearly not the fault of the board, but tell me, does this sound like the best educational environment for students? In the current hybrid model, the teachers teach students in a mask, just like you are right now, only soaked with sweat and with their attention divided between the screen on their laptop and the five to 10 poor souls suffering in their stifling classrooms along with them. Tell me, does this sound like the best educational environment for students?
Thank you, that's your time.
... adequate educational...
You're Kubiak. That's your time. Excuse me. That's your time. Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, my name is Lavleen Madar, 23, Bullens Avenue. I am currently a student at Wayne Valley High School. So today, my brother went into school, Lafayette Elementary School.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I did not, I couldn't hear your name. What was your name?
Lavleen Madar. Do you want me to spell it out for you?
That would be helpful.
All right, L-A-V-L-E-N.
Okay.
Got it?
Yeah. What was the other, last name?
Oh, M-A-D-A-H-A-R.
Okay. That won't come off your time. Thank you.
All right, cool. So anyways, I am a student currently attending Wayne Valley High School. So today, my brother went into school, Lafayette Elementary School, and something really interesting that I heard from him was that there were no wipes in his classroom. Like, aren't we supposed to be using these PPE to clean our far desks and personal materials? Like, this isn't adding up, come on. Another issue is that he's 10, and we all know 10-year-olds do not listen to these rules set in place to prevent COVID. Even high schoolers don't listen. Hell, some of them would cough on you as a joke. Furthermore, one-way hallways aren't reinforced, younger kids can't handle wearing a mask in the heat for hours, and we cannot realistically clean every single surface in our schools. I'm scared for my fellow peers, although you might not be. There is obviously a risk, although Dr. Berg seemingly disagrees, and cough, cough, it's painfully obvious that he's a biased source. Anyways, so, this is a risk to our teachers and our students. You, the Board of Ed, are not in school every day, which makes me question why you haven't been taking in the teachers' input at your supposed committee meetings, and which is why we should be taking the teachers' opinions into consideration, or even the students who spoke today in support of the teachers. I also want to let my teachers know that they're appreciated, and I thank all my teachers because they're risking everything for us. I'm also so sorry for them, because they're being forced into a position they do not want to be in. They're risking their lives for us. They're not comfortable with this, and they should have the option to stay home. At the very least, they should be given hazard pay for this dangerous situation. I fully support the teachers' vote of no confidence and their wad for school closure. In March, we called our teachers heroes for adapting to the very new situations and succeeding every way. Now, they're being shamed to want to stay home for their own health. That is absolutely disgusting. I have trust in my teachers that they'd be able to successfully teach us at home too. So let's make the switch to virtual. Like, come on, Kathy, girl, you got it. Get it together, wrap it up. Thanks, I guess, for doing the minimum for the supposed minimal risk. Thank you.
Okay. Next caller.
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, I'm Rosemarie DePama, 26, Woodlot Drive. I'm a teacher at APT Elementary School. I just want to thank the board for going through with this plan and opening schools. As a parent and a teacher, I was very eager and excited to be back into the building, you know, ready to work. I do feel, and I would never normally would speak up at a board meeting, but I just feel very strongly that maybe our hybrid model needs to be reconsidered. Teachers are being asked to manage virtual instruction while simultaneously teaching their in-class students. In theory, it does sound great, like a great plan, but the reality that this is not sustainable for teachers to be able to deliver the quality of instruction that we are really able to give. Students that are sitting in the classrooms are missing quality time to engage with their teacher, because their teacher is trying to speak into the computer so that the remote students can receive a learning opportunity. I just think that, you know, with all hands on deck and great thinking, Wayne can come up with a better plan and possibly consider offering every grade level a remote teacher so that they can stay hybrid, but offering the students that are going into the building a teacher that can fully, all hands on deck, give them the education that they deserve. I just think it's better for the remote students, as well as the in-class students, that they would get a teacher to deliver a quality instruction directed to the needs that are being met. Toggling between the two is very challenging, and I think that was kind of overlooked and needs to be revisited. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you for everything you do. Very greatly appreciated. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I actually never call into these meetings, but I wanted to call today. My son started school today.
I'm sorry.
I know my name, I'm sorry. I know my name, sorry. Stephanie Silva, and I live on Webster Drive. My son went into school today. He's a hybrid model, and I was very nervous about sending him, but he wanted to go to school. I am a teacher, thankfully, I'm not working right now, I'm on maternity leave, because I don't know how the teachers are doing it. So I wanted to do two things. I wanted to praise the teachers. My son came home, and he loved school. So I want to praise all the teachers, my son's teacher particularly. I think she handled herself with grace. But I do agree, the previous caller, I do think they should have a virtual teacher. I think the hybrid model is very good, but they should have a teacher for virtual, because the students are missing out that are home and are in the classroom. So I know that that was brought up in a meeting in the summer, because I listened to all the meetings, but I do think that the board should consider that. I know that it was a difficult decision to have a virtual teacher, because if kids switch their model, it messes with the numbers, but I think that all students would get what they need if you had a virtual teacher. And I just, I want to praise all the teachers, because I think that they're doing a really good job. Just waiting outside with, for my son with my mask on, it was hot, and I don't know how, they're, they're working in the classroom, being nervous, composing themselves, and engaging the students. So I want to praise the teachers, because all over Facebook and at this meeting at times, they're being villainized, and they're not the villains. Neither are you, but they aren't either. So I want to praise them for the work they're doing, praise you for the decision you made, but I do think the hybrid model needs to be revised. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller. I believe this person was just on, Dr. Bichard. Go to the next caller, please. Stephanie has an older version. Okay, I'm sorry, Stephanie, we can't unmute you. You have an older Zoom version. You could call in for our next public portion. Go to the next caller, Dr. Bichard. Can you unmute yourself? Hello? Your mic is muted. Are you there? Hello? Next caller, Dr. Bichard.
Hi, Jim Frieswick, 1212 Summer Hill Road in Wayne. I'm a graduate of Wayne Hills High School, class of '68. When I was a freshman in college, I took a course called Statistics and Probability, and this COVID-19 pandemic and the opening of schools in the middle of it reminded me of that, of that class. It seems to me that a mathematician could figure out what the probability is that a student or a teacher is going to get infected with COVID-19, given the prevalence of COVID-19 in the community at large, given the number of students in each school, the number of classrooms, the number of teachers. It seems to me it could be figured out mathematically what the probability is that someone is going to get infected at each school in each week of school. And I was just wondering whether or not the Board of Education has undertaken that inquiry to determine or to predict through, through mathematics, what the probability is that people, students and teachers are going to come down with this disease during the course of each week of school under the current hybrid plan. Thank you.
Next caller, Dr. Bichard.
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, this is Lauren Pelletucci, 66, Chestnut Drive. I'm a teacher at Wayne Valley High School. I'm a Wayne Valley alumni, and I had no intention of calling in tonight. I'm calling in on behalf of all the teachers that are suffering mental health issues. Myself have had multiple breakdowns. I'm sorry. Today was one of the worst days. My supervisor, he read it to me in the hallway. He just asked me how I was doing, and I cried out in pads at school multiple times. The issues that we are encountering as teachers with technology does not cover what the issues are at school. Today, I received an email, middle of the day, that all my classes had to be moved to the auditorium, because there was issues with moisture in my classroom. The email that I received said there was condensation issues, and, you know, there was a lot of troubles about relocating middle of the day and having connective issues with my students. I'm just finding it very... I'm just finding it very hard with the lack of training that I've received to do this job the way I know I'm capable of. And I am an AP statistics teacher at Wayne Valley and I want to know how we're taking care of teachers' mental health during this time. Because it's not easy and we're doing the best that we can. And that's all I have to say. I'm really sorry that I can't speak.
Okay, I'm sorry. We hear you. Hello?
Hi.
Name and address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Stephanie Vangle, 92 East Hill Road. So I am a lifelong Wayne resident as well as a Wayne teacher for the last 13 years. And this year, I am also a parent of a Wayne preschooler. I'm here this evening to speak specifically about the scheduling and the technology components that the hybrid model has put forth. I respect the work and the countless hours that the board administration and the building principal spent to prepare for the reopening of the Wayne School District. And although I know how tirelessly everyone works, I truly believe we need more time. I'm a teacher at the elementary level. I have spent hours upon hours today through training on new academic programs. And like with everything we do, we figure it out. We always give 110% and most importantly, we provide a safe and comfortable learning environment for our students. But this year, I feel that we cannot do that. It was very difficult to predict what this school year would look like until we actually returned. I kept an open mind and I promised myself I would stay positive because my students were going to need me. We've now finished our third day and I can say confidently that I don't know how this hybrid model is sustainable. There are not enough hours in the day to plan and adapt our in-person instruction and activities to meet the needs of our hybrids, our virtual and our in-person learners. I sat in rooms with my colleagues and watched each of them cry, one after the other, myself included, because we are trying to make this work, but know that we are far from the exemplary teachers we strive to be. I've heard friends say that they are lowering their expectations this year because it's just not possible to be proficient and I haven't even begun to discuss technology. Google Meet is flawed, as people have said already. The connection is poor. Students are able to join without the supervision of the teacher and the teacher or host has no control over the actual meeting. So when you combine the hybrid schedule at home, fully virtual cohort of students and the poor technology platform, it becomes a losing battle that was over before it began. For the record, I want to be back in school. I want my students to be back. I want my own son to attend. But I don't want this to be at the expense of the quality of education our teachers can provide and the mental health and well-being of all our school employees. Teachers are hardworking and resilient, but we cannot be in three places at once, teaching three separate groups and be able to provide them with the academic instruction and support that they need to be successful. There has to be a better way to meet the needs of our students and to honor the parent request for their children to remain fully virtual. This current plan does not work. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one? Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Share? Okay. Are we ready to let Dr. Goldberg leave the meeting? Okay, Dr. Goldberg, we thank you for your time and for answering questions. Just letting you know, you're free to leave for the evening. Thank you very much and thank you for coming. You were very helpful and informative. Welcome aboard. Okay. First agenda item. Well, why don't we do committee reports and then we'll go straight to approving the PWS. Committee reports. Stacy? Start with you.
On August 30th... Get your turn and speak. On August 31st, personnel met, myself, Ms. Kumar, Ms. Kazan, Dr. Toback and Ms. Clark. We reviewed the duties for some of the support staff. We reviewed any additional leave requests. We are adding four extra subs for elementary schools and four to five extra subs for middle school and high school. We spoke about Dr. Goldberg, our new pediatric infectious disease specialist, and the trainings that he provided before school started for administrators and nurses. And we reviewed the new hires on each end.
Technology committee met this evening, myself, Mr. Bubba and Dr. Bouchard. We reviewed the opening of school and some of the issues with technology that had been reported. There was an issue with Google itself on Tuesday between 10:30 and 1:30. There was a nationwide, in Europe, Canada, a problem that Google had on their end which was resolved. We reviewed all the work tickets since last week. Most of them have been resolved. Number of the work tickets to IT involve printers, computers not... Couple computer softwares and most of them were issues that were resolved rather quickly. And the, over 60% of the work orders in the first two days, there were 150 repair tickets in the first two days, 100 were completed in a day. A lot, again, a lot were printers, projectors, monitors, couple software, password issues, which the IT department quickly took care of. We've upgraded to TNG, our switches. We've also upgraded high-density access points. We had the department dealt with over 5,000 devices this over, from the close of last school year to the beginning of this year, which included prepping 4,000 Chromebooks and 1,000 new laptops for the teachers. This was all done by five staff members. So they definitely deserve accolades for what they have. And an interesting point, in the whole, between the close of June 30th and today, the entire IT department, which is seven people, took eight vacation days amongst everybody. So they've been working non-stop since the end of the school year to get us up and going. We understand there's some glitches and they're... If it's on our end, we are doing everything possible. We've upgraded servers and everything to meet the needs of what we believe to provide the best opportunity for everyone, both teachers and staff. That's it.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met tonight at 5 o'clock. Board members in attendance, Eileen Albanese, Matthew Giordano, Catherine Kazan. Administrators in attendance were Bill Moffett, the Business Administrator, as well as Cheryl Leidig, the new Assistant Business Administrator. We reviewed agenda items on tonight's meeting agenda. There were no budget transfers. We had an update on the Amoresco ESF2 project. It is still being finalized. The contract is still in attorney review. We went over the budget update as far as school opening. We are somewhat relieved to find that our state aid numbers have not changed since our last reduction in state aid of 625 and we're hoping at this point that there will be no additional changes to the budget needed for reduction in state aid. We received an audit update. The audit will be starting its first round on September 14th. The 1920 school year is closed and was rolled over in late August. And the new treasurer of school monies is on board and is up and working. We also did discuss at our last meeting some items about the Paycheck Protection Program. So some research was done while private schools were eligible. Charter schools that were run by private companies were eligible. Public schools, which were considered government entities, unfortunately, were not. We'd like to wish our purchasing agent, Ann Kluck, well in her new position. She'll be resigning from the Wayne Board of Education and we wish her all the best in her new position. One other thing that we wanted to announce tonight, it's with great pride that we announce that the Association of School Business Officials International, known as ASBO, is pleased to award Wayne Township School District the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. ASBO's international certificate recognizes districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and transparency. The school district earned the Certificate of Excellence for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended 2019. By participating in this program, school districts demonstrate their commitment to financial transparency to all stakeholders. So we would like to congratulate our Business Administrator, Mr. Moffett, as well as our former Business Administrator, Ginny DiMarco, who was instrumental in receiving this award. And we congratulate you on behalf of the board and all involved in the Wayne School District for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Mrs. Putup?
The Education Committee met this morning at 10 a.m. Mrs. Kumar, Mrs. Share, myself.
Can you hear her? I can't.
And Mrs. Reichman, the Assistant Superintendent, who is our administrative liaison. We reviewed last month's minutes, agenda. Then we worked on this month's agenda. There was a student matter discussed. We went over our agreements with Lincoln Tech, Fairleigh Dickinson University and Seton Hall. We also discussed the launch of a virtual student teaching model so that we could help college students that are interested in becoming teachers get on a path to get experience to become teachers because a lot of that has ground to a halt. So that's something we're looking at in the district. The Wayne Township Learning Center will be, will continue to put lessons online for virtual, hybrid PD and those help sessions will be available to all our teachers. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that all of our committee reports for this evening? Okay, I don't see any hands. Great. Well, at this point, we'll move to R, approval of work session minutes. I'm sorry. No, I don't want to go to R, do I? Oh, yes. Yes, R.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Bubba.
I would like to make a motion that we move the whole agenda on consent tonight, please.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Pavlak. Everybody, please mute. Is there any discussion on the agenda items? From anyone? Okay, roll call Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Share?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett. Okay. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Okay. Dr. Bouchard?
Madam President, don't we need a motion to open?
I'm sorry. Can I get a mover?
Sure, I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Mr. Pavlak? My brain's not working in this new format. I apologize. Thank you for reminding me.
Good evening. Eda Ferrante, Wayne EA President. Tonight, I mainly direct my comments to the educators on this board. Trustee Giordano, the fact that you are a local union president in a district that has had the insight to remain virtual is disgraceful. I am sure that you, as president, are there to protect your members, correct? Do you mean to tell the Wayne teachers that you see you and your members' health more important? It surely sounds like it. I would imagine such a decision will make you an outcast in the associations you represent and within the state organization that you exert leadership. Trustee Putup, we would think that any person that has been in a school environment knows that distancing children or even adults is more of a dream than a reality. Having taught, you should have the insight to know that wearing a mask will be nearly impossible in the school setting. Spending your career as a media and research educator would also lead one to believe that you are a proponent of research-based decisions. Additionally, you are a building rep and should understand where we are coming from. Trustee Share, we also need to point out the obvious absurdity that your district has gone all virtual. So while you are sending us into a dangerous environment, you will be sitting at home, safe from the same risks. We are puzzled that a fellow union member would be so inconsiderate and not respond to us at the last board meeting. Are you more worried about what your neighbors might say than doing the right thing? Trustee Kumar, one would imagine that as an educator such as yourself, you would have particular insight and objection to this hybrid model. Our disappointment at your silence in forcing educators into a perilous situation is manifold. The fact that you yourself were a Wayne educator and have seen the conditions of these buildings should be enough for you to advocate for an all-virtual platform. Additionally, the fact that the educators in this community went on a limb and supported your candidacy for the board is a slap in the face. To the entire board, you have always asked us to protect the children that we teach. This time, we are asking you to do the same. Every teacher, as well as every child, should have the right and ability to work from home while this virus is still out of control in our country. It is more educationally sound and it will keep your educators mentally, emotionally and physically healthy. You have all heard the voices of our educators tonight. Some scared, some confused and some angry, all stressed. But they all care and they are all put in danger by this reckless, educationally unsound and technologically deficient decision. We urge each of you to reexamine your position on this issue. We ask that you make a motion that moving forward, instruction will be an all-virtual platform. Finally, we ask that you take a stance that the educators that you say you care about shall be able to also work remotely. Thank you for your time.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, my name is Katie Albar Kluck. I live at 34 Hellcrest Drive. I am calling to voice my continued support for inclusivity in our schools. At the last meeting, you said committees would start to meet once school started. What is their current status? Will the minutes be posted online? Our students of color, LGBT students and other marginalized students cannot just keep waiting. We have been waiting for far too long to have a good environment at school. We need education that is inclusive and accurate. We are here. We have been here. People of color and LGBT people have always been a part of our history and our literature. We all deserve to be safe in school, feel safe in schools, whether it is due to a virus or whether it is due to hate. We need to make sure that schools are digital as well as they are a safe environment for all of our children. As well, I would like to continue to, continue my support. As well, I would like to continue my support in favor of changing the Valley mascot. The American Psychological Association says that Native American mascots do real harm. We are an education system. We need to lead by example. If we're ignoring the advice of experts, what is our role as educators? Do we say that we should only look to experts for some things but not others? Thank you. Have a nice day.
I think that works.
Yeah, it's really good.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Watson. I am a teacher at Wayne Valley High School. I'm also a grievance chair of the WEA and negotiations chair. Gin, in the evening. Business Administrator Bill Moffett was speaking in regard to the extracurricular activities that were being approved. And some of the sound went out at certain times, and I wasn't sure if I heard him mention anything about making adjustments to those stipends if we were to go to a full remote learning environment. And I would just like to have that clarified, if you would please, either Mr. Moffett or anyone else who could do that.
We'll answer those questions at the end, Mr. Watson. Do you have anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller? Next caller, Mr. Bouchard? Okay, seeing no hands, can I get a mover? Mr. Pavlak? Mr. Giordano? Okay, that concludes our public portion. I guess we'll start with you, Dr. Toback. I'm sorry? Oh, you're first.
Okay, can anybody hear me? Good? There is quite a bit to talk about, but I would like to take a moment to just speak a little bit about the Board of Education. So ultimately, I know them. Is that better? Okay. So I'd like to just take a moment to speak a little bit about the Board of Education. I know them. I've worked with many of them for now going on seven years. And of course, everyone knows in the community that they are volunteers. They serve their community. Many current and former board members are educators, as was pointed out before. Many were endorsed by the Wayne Education Association. So what I'd like to do is mention a little bit about what happens behind closed doors. I do know that the board members, all of them, have treated so many personnel situations with great care and compassion. They expect the same from the administration. They absolutely care about our schools, they care about the community, the whole community, they care about our teachers, and they want to do what's right for the school district. But they also must consider many different points of view. So just keeping that in mind, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the history. I know that a lot of questions were raised about the hybrid model. So how is it, if you want to understand a present, right, maybe it makes sense to go back a few months and talk about the origins of the hybrid model. So there is no way really to have in-person instruction during a pandemic without a hybrid model because ultimately you have to have cohorts. It is one of the approved New Jersey Department of Ed ways of delivering instruction in our New Jersey public schools that was part of the road back and has been a topic of discussion for a long time. So the hybrid model allows for a certain number of students to remain at home and a certain number of students to come to school so that social distancing can be achieved. In most cases, there's many of our classes that have six students, eight students, 10 students, and a few that have more. I know I've seen a few classes with up to 12 students, and we're looking to make some adjustments, looking to add some sections to make sure that our numbers are small because we do have an increase in the number of students that are requesting to return to district. So even this past week, we have a number of students that have requested to return from the all-virtual model. They're looking to come back for the hybrid model. And we do have a few students, though, on the other side of it. We have about 18 students at elementary and middle school level looking to come to hybrid instruction, and we have eight looking to go to all-virtual. So anyway, so then I'd like to just address a little bit more about the committees and the subcommittees because that was also brought up. And I don't know if that accurately really represents what took place. Ultimately, these committees and subcommittees met throughout the months of April, May, and into the beginning of June. Okay? So it was the return to school committees, right? And those committees met, they each had a chair, the chairs were able to call as many meetings, and in the end, each chair wrote a report to the Board of Education to summarize the findings of each committee. So that was shared with the board, and that was absolutely part of the planning process. The road back document that is the guidance that we're to use to return students to school? Louder, can you? I don't know how, at this point. I think I... I have a face made for radio but not TV. So I'm sorry about that, it's too close. Anyway, so the idea is that once we had the road back documentation in late June, June 28th, if I recall, the guidance was that we must reopen at some level. And so across the state, school districts delved into, okay, well, what exactly can we do? We had our committees and subcommittee meetings. Then there were more changes where parents had the option to keep their children at home for any reason. And a few weeks later, there was another change that totally reversed the direction from the Department of Ed where we were given the opportunity, you could be virtual, but only if you fell short in meeting safety and health standards. So one of the things that was brought up by one of the speakers had to do with our HVAC system and the idea that we're just shooting to meet minimum standards. That was really the main point from what I took from the comment. That's from the Citron, and I just wanted to point out that the district exceeds standards. And so the part that's being ignored, the district has purchased well over 200 air scrubbers that dramatically enhance the air quality in each of our schools. They are equipped with HEPA filters, they are also equipped with UV, many of them are equipped with UV lighting to kill any germs. So that is a way that we are meeting standards, exceeding standards. We also are following other standards, ASHRAE standards, that I spoke about in prior board meetings where ultimately our dampers are open. The amount of fresh air that we have in our classrooms is also increased. Another topic that was brought up was about the windows. And I do acknowledge that on the second floor of Wayne Valley High School, it definitely is a hot place. I've been there a few times in the past few weeks to see a little bit more about some of the issues that were raised. So the windows there, they open six inches. They open based on manufacturer specifications. They open outward as opposed to up and down, but in combination with the fact that each of those classrooms has a working HVAC system with a filtration system that certainly meets the standards that exist for our schools. But like I said, I do understand and I acknowledge the fact that that part of the building is not an easy place to work when the weather is hot outside. We've been fortunate this year to enjoy fairly reasonable weather, but I do understand the difficulty of wearing a mask in that setting and also working with students in a very hot setting. It is not an easy thing. I'd like to address, there's a few other issues here. Some of the questions, there's been a number of questions about technology, and unfortunately, we're joined tonight by Dr. Bouchard. And so I'd like, you know, I'd like him to talk a little bit about some of the technology issues. He's agreed to speak for a few minutes about some of the technology issues that exist in the district. And so I'd like to just turn things over to him for a few minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. It's true. Wayne did experience some G-suite issues this week. Similar issues were also reported across the state and as well as across the country as trustee Pavlak had mentioned earlier in his report. Some of the issues reported are not unique to Wayne and most likely due to the stress placed upon Google due to the virtual learning across the country. I met with some building administrators this week and provided some best practices, both instructionally and technically, to assist in alleviating any issues within our control due to Google Meet. My team is on hand to address technology issues. We encourage all members, all teachers, staff members, please put in Help Desk tickets. If there's an issue in your classroom, something with technology, my staff is on hand to assist you with, and we're here to make sure that hybrid learning takes place and is as accessible as possible. That's it.
So I'll just continue addressing some of the questions that were asked, and some were statements, so I'm not going to address the specific statements, but I will address some of the questions. So Mrs. Reber asked about a walkthrough that Mrs. Kazan completed with me. We did complete a walkthrough, but we did not complete a walkthrough of Wayne Valley that really, there was no specific purpose other than to see one of the schools and to see some of the precautions that were in place. She characterized it as avoiding visiting Wayne Valley after a report of mold. That report of mold took place after the tour with Mrs. Kazan, and that is not new news. There has been ultimately a few classrooms that have had moisture over the past few years, the same classrooms that the district has worked on. But in the end, those classrooms are, you know, whatever the issue is with moisture, that's what causes mold, and those are the issues that have been fixed. So yes, that is an issue. There was a question about related service providers who work with some of our media students. And the other, the point is that in many cases, shields are not required. So there was some staff members, and they were offered face shields. So it's not quite an accurate accounting for what took place. Then the other thing, I guess, is that there was a question about these committee meetings and basically that we had our own meetings. Ultimately, what was explained for the committee and subcommittee meetings at the very outset of our return to school plan is that as a result of these meetings, the administration and the Board of Ed would not give up their authority to make decisions and to move forward. So in other words, it was not a process that was completely controlled by committees, which is pretty standard in every school district. There's committees that are formed, there's feedback that is obtained, and ideas that are shared. But in the end, it does not mean that the board does not have the decision-making authority to move ahead with things that are perhaps different than the committee. However, I think that our plan, if you look at the report of the committee chairs, our plan is fairly closely aligned to what's there. Then, I guess we have, let's see. We talked about technology, she raised that. Okay, so yeah, there was a statement made about food and water, so let's get to the water topic first. So the issue of water is something that the district has to deal with because ultimately, when you talk about a school, you talk about, oh yeah, they have water fountains, and we have no-touch water fountains. But having those water fountains in operation does create a certain amount of risk, so those were shut off. But each district was also given a stockpile of bottled water. The other factor is that most parents send their children with water, so they have their own water, especially on hot days, they're certainly able to bring their own water. So there's no child that has to go all day without water. It's just, that's not true. If there's a child that wants water, we've certainly stocked out quite a bit of water bottles in each of our offices, so if students need water, they can get it. With regard to food, what was the question? Okay, so the students do not go all day without food and water. They go, like I said, I described the water situation, and that's a fairly common solution in many districts that have water fountains. Then when you talk about the food part, well, the food part is also a fairly common problem in lots of districts. And most districts, if you follow the papers, if you look at this, this is an issue everywhere, where ultimately everyone has a grab-and-go lunch, and they go on their way after receiving their lunch. And, but, the other part about it is there is a snack period. And so especially at elementary schools, students are certainly not expected to go. And I myself was able to, we had nice weather, so I did a tour, and I was able to see students eating their snacks sometime mid-morning, they were outside enjoying their snacks. So that's something that, like I said, is a problem in a lot of places. Let's see. So there was a question about HVAC from Mrs. Potts. Okay, as I think I mentioned previously, and I shared with all district employees a report that was produced regarding our HVAC system. The board also had a copy of that. She also raised the issue of the windows opening six inches, and she also wrote, or she talked about heat days, and I guess the lack of conditions, let me just see here. I just wrote down heat days, that they're, okay, so now I remember, right, will there be, right. So the answer is, what is, or the question is, what is the factors that determine if a day, if a school day is called because of heat? And it's really hard to say, and that's something we would look at the weather forecast. Ultimately, the weather forecast is frequently not quite accurate, so we wait till the night before to assess the weather forecast and see what the heat is, what the humidity is. We did call a heat day a few years ago, so that's something that we certainly respect if the conditions are too hot in a building. Like I said, this year, we've been fairly fortunate in that the weather has not been that hot. And the other part is that because the students are out of school earlier, the conditions should not get too bad. Okay. Let's see what else we have here. So I guess the next topic I could just discuss a little bit is the topic of the fact that some of this is overwhelming for our teachers. So to our teachers, we certainly understand, the board understands, everyone understands that none of this is easy. It's not been easy. There are many other districts that are open for in-person instruction. There's about 400 in the state that have done so, and I'm sure every single one of them is experiencing some of the same problems here. There is a hybrid model. The fact is that coronavirus does compromise education. It makes it very difficult. The masks, again, these are standard things in a lot of places, and we do absolutely appreciate everything that you are doing. We do appreciate your spirit of cooperation and trying to do the best you can. The issue of professional development is a complicated issue because there are two days contractually that we have before the start of the school year. And so we have a very little amount of time to deliver as much professional development as we can. However, we do have professional development that is available to teachers, so there is a website that we have. But more than that, we did also offer some training for teachers during the summer as an option, but we understand all teachers do not have to work during the summer. We don't, you know, it's a voluntary thing. So we do also have a very comprehensive professional development plan. We recognize that ultimately, we're going to provide a lot of additional professional development. We have Tracy Lee, who has been providing professional development, and will continue to do so as needed. And certainly, it is hard to say, you know, where each teacher is at this point, so we rely on our staff members to sign up for the professional development they need and to make as much PD as possible. Mrs. Reichman, would you like to talk a little bit about that? You want to talk about that?
Yeah, I did. So I did want to address some of the concerns. But first and foremost... First and foremost, of course, we hear all of your concerns and any change, whenever we start school with a new practice involves training and practice and refinement and adjustment, and we are very much committed to addressing your needs. This was really carefully thought out. We did have an obligation when we did all of our planning to provide some in-person time, and we still feel very much committed to offering those opportunities to our students. Can you, can you hear me? Okay. It's hard with my, I have the air scrubber there. So please know, we did what we could. We did offer training this summer. We do and will continue to record our lessons, and, and we do recognize that not everyone was able to participate this summer. Training was provided on the opening days, and, and the intent and the goal was really to consider how we can cut down on the amount of work, knowing that we have students in school and students at home, so that you have an opportunity when you're modeling or you're demonstrating a lesson to stream it and let the kids at home watch it so that you don't have to teach one group and then teach another group. So we were well intentioned and, and really trying to think about how we can support you with minimizing the amount of work and then creating opportunities to differentiate and work with small groups of students. You're professionals, so I would encourage you all to use your discretion, use your professional judgment. There may be situations where you want to record a lesson, you might want to work with grade-level colleagues, content area colleagues, you know, maybe you're recording and then having students get on at a certain time at home just to participate in a discussion. Maybe there are situations where in certain subject areas, this would probably be more specific to elementary, you, some lessons are recorded and, and some you're live streaming and you're just checking in and you're thinking about ways that you can adjust your day to just minimize your workload and, and provide time for student engagement and share what it is that your, your best practices in class that students who are at home can see. You know, a lot, a lot of the issues with the Google streaming this week is because students in the classroom were joining the meet, so that was something that we tried to address. Just have the students who are at home join the meet. Practice with your, with your screen, turning it around and, and looking at the way you can share things in your classroom. And as we hear the concerns, we'll continue to provide, we have our teacher technology coordinator, we'll continue to provide any customized training, anything personalized to your needs. Tracy will be putting out an all-call to teachers. The, the best learning will come from you and, and hearing what works well from you. We are going to be extending an opportunity to pay any teachers who would like to deliver small PD sessions through Google Meet to colleagues, limited to groups of 10 teachers. This way you can have a discussion and share ideas and show each other what's working best. But, you know, my real intent with getting on here is that the goal was to cut down on the amount of work, not to create stress. And I'm not minimizing the amount of stress with anything new, any change. It is not easy. And there was, of course, the added stress of returning to school and concerns you had about returning to this environment. We're here to support you. I, I know you have all been commended. I have heard so many complimentary comments over the past few days about how excited students were to see all of you. And, and I know despite what you're feeling, you have gone out of your way to make your students feel welcome and engaged and excited to be at school. So I commend you for all of that. Continue to reach out. We will continue to visit the buildings. We will continue to tap into your classrooms and do whatever we can to support you. So know that the PD will be ongoing and any of your ideas are welcomed, and we welcome and invite you to share. That's it for me.
Just two other quick things. One of the staff members raised a question about the fact that, you know, that there's so much uncertainty and as a result, they're being, they're being evaluated or judged by uncertain standards. And I, I would like to go back to what I wrote to all of our staff members to start the school year, which is that the idea that none of this is ideal. The only standard that we're really following at this point is we, we ask people to do the best they can. That's it. And so, and we know that so many people are, and we've heard stories tonight about how many people are doing the best they can. And like I said, we, we, we recognize this is not easy. So there's one other, oh, okay. So that concludes my comments. It's all our comments.
Are we starting the other committee yet on inclusivity?
Yeah.
We're starting that committee?
Okay, so that, that, we, we just started the school year, and so what we'll do is next week we'll seek out some volunteers to participate in that committee.
Okay, because I did want to be on that committee.
And we also, we also worked this week to identify, perhaps part of the goal is to identify an external authority that would be able to come in and review a lot of our, our policies, procedures, and practices.
We could talk about that later.
So we have, we have, we have two things going on.
Very good. I think you've addressed pretty much everything that can be addressed this evening. So at this time, is there any old business? New business?
Could I just at least address Mr. Watson's question?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I was trying to fan through to see if we missed anyone. Yes, he did direct a question to you, Mr. Moffett.
Yes, there was a section on our revisions under Board Revision T-12, which we showed on the projected images on the, on the Zoom meeting here. And I'll reread, I think there's a, a sentence in the resolution that'll answer Mr. Watson's question. Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation superintendent approves the following extracurricular advisors for 2020, 2021 school year as per attached. And this is, I think, the sentence that Mr. Watson didn't hear due to some technical difficulties. That reads, "Stipends will be prorated in the event schools are completely virtual and the assignments can no longer be performed." Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Okay, old business, new business, board comments. Mrs. Kumar?
I would just like to make the comment, as far as I'm concerned, I would actually go in to teach this year if I were still teaching. The science really does follow, as Dr. Goldberg said, and as my husband, who is a physician, said, it's time for the kids to go back. And I can say that the amount of work that we've all put in is obviously a lot, and we're going to continue to work and continue to do what we can and put things forward as far as helping everyone in their work orders and other things. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Share?
I wasn't going to take the bait, but everybody who knows me knows I can help myself. So the WVA was upset that I didn't speak last time, and I did it because at the moment I don't particularly agree with you, so I figured I'd keep my comments to myself. However, you have now attacked me personally, and I am very proud of being a teacher. You cannot compare to say to Wayne, you are talking about different districts, different infrastructures, a whole different ballgame. So one district chooses to open, another one does not. There are many reasons behind that. Ms. Frante, you're friends with my president, who I'm also friends with, and you can call him and question him about that anytime you would like. I would also like to say that I do not appreciate anybody telling me I should ever be ashamed of myself. I am very proud of myself and everything I've accomplished. I'm proud of being a teacher. I'm proud of being a mother, and I'm proud of being a board member. And to tell me that I should be ashamed of myself because I sit here and I worry about my neighbors, yeah, I do worry about my neighbors. I worry about my neighbors. I worry about my daughter and her friends and her parents and all the teachers that I am friends with that work in Wayne. I'm worried about everybody. And I feel good about the decision I made to send teachers back to school, which is why my child is in school. I did notice that there are teachers that are talking about not wanting to be in school, yet their children are also in the Wayne schools. So that doesn't sound correct to me, and I just want to, I am there for the teachers. I'm going to do whatever I can to help the teachers. I have requested from Dr. Toback to walk through some of the schools and see some of your concerns, so that'll be happening soon. And I just want to repeat, I am not ashamed of myself for the decision that I made, nor am I, am I ashamed of myself when I made sure that the paras didn't lose their jobs. And I'm also not ashamed of the fact that I put Ms. Frante back in full-time release. But please just remember that we're talking about the grand scheme of things here, and I think that everybody needs to be, stay with the positive rather than the negative at this point. And I wish everybody the best of luck in their school year. Thank you.
Good delay? Okay, very good. Um, okay, seeing no one else, I guess I'll wrap this up. First of all, I want...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Suzanne, you go ahead.
Ditto to many of the things Mrs. Share said.
Hold on, hold on. There you go.
Ditto to many of the things Mrs. Share said. Thank you, Stacy. I wanted to ask a question of administration. One of the things I heard was about teachers' office hours occurring after students had been dismissed. They're required to stay in the buildings after that dismissal time. And given the fact that we are in September, I know it's hot, especially when you get up to the second floor of a building. I was wondering if administration would look at that and see if teachers could hold their office hours from home or in a setting that's more conducive to their comfort. That's all. Thank you.
I'd thank everybody, thank everyone for coming on tonight and expressing your concerns. I hear your concerns, all right, and I appreciate that. I, I've been in the middle of this thing since February in my job. I understand it, to the point where I even contracted it and spent 10 days in the hospital. All right? I read through your 34 pages, Ms. Frante, that you sent me, and I have made a number of questions, and I have addressed them to both administration to get answers to. But we're all looking at this. We're in a new world now. We're in a world that this isn't going away, COVID. We have to deal with it, and we are going to put everybody in the best position we can, understanding the health and safety of our students, our staff, our teachers, everyone. We understand that. I didn't make a decision lightly about should we open school or shouldn't we open school. I followed the data. You look at the data, the contraction rate in Wayne is .004. It's not going to get much better. Hopefully it gets to zero one day, and hopefully we're back in the world where we were eight months ago, where we could be sitting in a circle with, with our students in the classroom, out on a field, you know, having sports indoors. We're going to get there, but we need to get there together, and everyone, staff, parents, everyone. It's a village. It's going to take all of us to make this thing right. And that's pretty much when listening to Dr. Goldberg, we have to do what we have to do. And again, I understand, I hear your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlik. First of all, Lauren Palitucci, I'm sending you a big virtual hug. I feel your anxiety. I feel your apprehension, but I want to tell you to stop putting so much pressure on yourself. We, we know that there's hiccups. We know that this is going to take time. No one's going to evaluate you on day three for the job that you're doing. So please, take a breath, everybody. We'll get through this. We will address concerns as they come up, as we said in the beginning with the board's statement, hiccups are to be expected. I'm hoping that we can maybe in the Education Committee talk about some wellness. Maybe we can all go outside and do some goat yoga. I'll come. But definitely, we, we care about our teachers. We will do our best to provide everything that's necessary, including the PD, and try to figure out some way to reduce the stress level if, if that's as bad as I'm hearing this evening. And I'm sure we'll get there. The infection rate, like Mr. Pavlik said, is extremely low. This is the only top opportunity we have to get our children back in school. And on a final note, I just want to talk about what I enjoy as a board member every year, almost as much as graduation, which is the first day of school. I open up my social media and I see all of those kids in their brand-new sneakers and their brand-new clothes and their smiling faces and those first day-of-school pictures, and it warms my heart. And I just think how excited they must be to come and see the teachers they love so much, and, and you love them too. So know that we're thinking about you. We're doing everything we can. Keep in touch with your building principals, whoever, if you have concerns, and we'll all get through this. It's, it's not perfect, but thank you for all you're do, for all you do. And have a great year and keep in touch. Thank you. Mr. Bubba? Mr. Giordano? Okay. We're adjourned.